It is now 7:30. I call the City of Oak Harbor Planning Commission regular meeting to order, May 23, 2017. For the record, I would like to announce that Commissioner Alyssa Merriman resigned in April, and currently, we just received a notification from Commissioner Francis Begarella, effective yesterday, that he is also resigned. So there are two positions open on the Planning Commission presently. A roll call, let the record show that all are present except Bruce Freeman. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes, April 25, 2017. Do I have a motion?
Go ahead.
I move that we approve the minutes from the April 25, 2017 Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
Have a motion seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Epstein.
Motion approved. Third item is public comment. On each and every Planning Commission meeting, we set aside 15 minutes for any items that are not presently on the agenda. If anyone would like to make a public comment, this is the time to do so. Seeing no one, I will close that part of the meeting. Item number four is our public hearings and meetings. The first item is our sign code. This is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing, and our plan is to continue it into the next meeting. In the meantime...
Thank you. Ray Lindenberg, Associate Planner. I'm going to make this very brief. As you mentioned, we're going to request a continuance on this item. We are working through getting some more inputs and comment from the community, going to do some more outreach on that regarding the proposed sign code. Hal, I have your comments here, so we'll definitely go through those and consider some of those things, and encourage you to read through, make any comments that you might have. Also encourage those who are watching at home, or watching us on the Internet, to do the same. And we will be back to you next month, hopefully at that time to move forward with the actual recommendation at that time.
Okay, sounds good. Well, at this time, I will open the public hearing then, on the sign ordinance, and if anyone in the audience would care to make comment, or any of the commissioners at this time, for the record?
I have some comments I'd like to put out here. I've tried to put a lot of thought into some of the things that we've discussed in previous meetings about how we can kind of limit what people are able to do within the sign code without leaving a lot of loopholes open, and trying to kind of encourage compliance rather than encourage non-compliance by the way that we write this. There's a couple things that I have questions on, and a few recommendations here. One, I think it's kind of strange that our small A-frames, we don't allow in the commercial-industrial area, but we do allow one plus one additional for commercial of the large A-frames. And I don't know why that is, maybe you could explain that, or maybe it was just assumed that all the businesses will use the large A-frames?
Would you like me to address that now?
Sure.
Essentially, what we did is, in going through the code, is I attempted to assign a sign type to each of the ones in our existing code. That one is an open house sign. Based on, you know, a size requirement and a location standard, that is kind of where we're coming from with that. So the reasoning behind that is most of your commercial signs that you see in commercial-industrial districts are the larger ones. Whereas, we want to limit the size of signs that you might see in residential areas, which are generally your open house signs, your garage sale signs, things like that. So that's the reasoning behind that.
So a business that was using a smaller than the large A-frame, would that still fit under the large A-frame commercial side? Because it actually says that they can't have one on a small A-frame commercial because it shows zero in the matrix.
Right, and that's, you bring up a good point there. Pretty much what we're looking at, and this happens frequently, I think, is the large A-frame sized sign is trying to be a maximum, right?
Right.
So if you want to do a smaller sign than that, that would be okay. When you get into the idea of, well, then it becomes a small A-frame sized sign, then that's the issue. So there's probably a better way that we can separate them out.
Okay.
Yeah.
That makes sense. Thinking about how to get around some of the loopholes, and I go back to it, the way that I read the matrix, it says I can have one small A-frame, I can have one Type D sign, I can have one banner sign, et cetera. And I think we need to limit a total square footage, as long as that total square footage is used within the parameters of the sign matrix. For example, the largest sign that I see that we could do on a residential parcel would be a 32-square-foot Type A. And I think if we limited a parcel to 32 square feet, no matter how they use these signs, that may be a very good way to go about this. That would give them the option to put two Type B signs within the parcel, maybe four to five Type D signs. It would give us kind of a threshold. I think we would have to modify the numbers per residence, or numbers per frontage, in order to accommodate that. But it would give a resident the ability to do what they're currently doing without being out of compliance.
Sure.
You know, you may want to advertise for a roofer and a political candidate, and your landscaper, and the way this is written currently, you can only do one of those.
Right.
And so I think we need to accommodate the way that people are typically using signs, not force them out of compliance. And I think a total square footage and using the signs within the realm of the matrix makes the most sense to me. Looking at the way some of the businesses are using signs currently, I think we might need to make some adjustments to Type J and Type K, the banner and the flags. Looking at most of the businesses that are flying the Type J signs currently, I didn't see any of them that were only using one. They seem to go in pairs. So limiting a business to one per frontage forces people that are currently using signs that we think are okay to be out of compliance. So, you know, I think we just need to modify those to what is actually working now that we don't have a problem with, rather than forcing people to be out of compliance. And again, I think we need to add a Type N for inflatable signs, you know, whether it be the little guy that blows up, or a giant gorilla, or whatever some of the local businesses like to put out. I think we need to put one of those in, limit the amount of time, maybe 60 or 90 days, and one per business.
Okay.
I think that's all I have.
Hal?
A couple of comments, I already gave you these. One of my thoughts is, I came from a jurisdiction previously where we were required to identify the sponsor of the sign, you know, whoever owned it, basically, and just taping a business card sufficed. The nice thing about that is that if, you know, a sign is up that seems to have been abandoned, you know maybe who to call to get it taken down. And then, we had talked previously about sizes for the Type C, I think it is, signs needs to be adjusted unless you've already done that. And I guess what Eric just said, I kind of concur with that in the extent that, you know, right now, it looks like I could have four of those Type A signs on my property, you know, one on each frontage if I fronted on four different corners, but I could only have one A-frame. Which seems like if we're trying to minimize the number of ISRs, then it'd be better to have more small ones than have more big ones. And the other one is the public right-of-ways, you know, it's, I know that it says in here that you can have, that they have to be at least 10 feet apart for that Type D sign, but I wonder, and also for the Type H, I wonder, do we get into a situation where, you know, it's kind of first come, first served, where some of these busy corners, particularly on Pioneer Way, if they've got to be 10 feet apart, it's whoever gets their sign out there first? And maybe what we should have instead is one per sponsor, instead of limiting it just to one every 10 feet? Just thoughts.
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm not following the sponsor concept. Doesn't the sign usually say what business or candidate, or whatever is on the temporary sign? So what does the sponsor do?
It says who's responsible. So, most signs do usually have something, but occasionally, there'll be something that says like "gun show," or, you know, "I buy gold." And, you know, or there's a, you know, a sale where they're selling it, but they're long gone, they've left. You know, so who's responsible for that sign?
Okay.
You know, if we're gonna, I don't know if you're planning to institute fines for these things, but if you're gonna have fines, you need to know who's gonna be fined, but it doesn't identify anywhere who belongs to those. It just says where they're at.
Yeah, I didn't quite catch what yours, thank you.
I think it's more of a problem with the temporary sign because it's not permitted, so you don't know where it came from, or who put it there. I mean, there could be some really inappropriate signs, or things that we want to have taken down that you need to know, put them up.
Well, you know, there was even, the last meeting, a fellow brought some sign, like handwritten, very unprofessional signs, and that's the kind of stuff that, you know, so, you know, do we have a legal right to remove that? I don't know.
Well, that is within the text of the code, not the matrix, correct?
There is, there is a discussion of the appearance of professionalism, I think is what it's called. I don't have the text in front of me. The problem is with that, is when you start regulating that on a particular type of sign that says, you know, "real estate investor," or whatever, we have to apply that consistently throughout, and so somebody who's doing a yard sale has to meet the same standard. So it's a tricky balancing act there, again, like most of this stuff is.
But in this day and age, you know, forgive me for being this, but it doesn't cost a lot to put a sign together. I mean, I think even the most non-computer folks in the world could at least come up with a sign that had some professionalism to it. So I, you know, even yard sales, for example.
Sure.
The biggest thing I got about, clearly the comment on the signs with sponsors and stuff, if I have a sign in my front yard, it's pretty obvious that I'm sponsoring the sign. But, getting with what you're saying, as far as right-of-way, public right-of-way, that would be where that would make sense. But as far as if it's own business, or private property, or something like that, then, I'm not gonna put my phone number, if I'm sponsoring a candidate, on there. If I'm sponsoring anything, or, you know, I'm not gonna put my phone number on there. But, you know, if you could limit that to public right-of-way, then I think that would be totally appropriate with that.
Okay.
Yeah, because it doesn't bother anybody's... Another question that I forgot. I want to look at Type E and Type F, the ground and wall banners. Looks like mostly for commercial or new residential developments would be my guess for that. My real question is why it's more restricted if there isn't a fixed permanent sign versus not having a permanent sign? Can you explain the idea behind that?
I think the concept behind that is to allow for a business that is in the process of getting their permanent sign, to have a sign up, or that they're coming soon, or, you know, something along those lines. Say, for instance, you know, when Albertson switched over to Safeway, maybe Safeway had a banner up for a while while they were getting their Safeway signs manufactured. I think that was more the intent of that particular regulation, and that one is one of those that's directly out of our current code. So that's not something that's changed with this proposed draft.
Okay, so in the instance that they are using a banner to replace a permanent sign in an interim, that it's not limited to time, is that the way?
That would be, yeah. That would be my interpretation, yeah.
And then, if they currently have an existing sign, and they're using a banner also, then there's a 30-day limit.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments this evening? If not, we'll just do a continuance, Ray, if that's all right.
Thank you.
We'll defer this to next time, and hopefully get some input from folks that would like to share with us their thoughts.
I appreciate this discussion tonight, it's very helpful, so, thank you.
And for benefit of the record, we're continuing it to the June 27 Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item this evening is variances for the oak tree protection. It's also, I will open a public hearing, and CAC, Max Senior Planner, CAC will guide us through this. CAC?
Thank you very much, good evening. This is a code amendment to consider removing some limitations on setbacks for protecting oak trees. This code amendment has been discussed with the Planning Commission in the last couple meetings. We're here with the public hearing and the official adoption process, so I'll go through a quick presentation for anybody watching at home, in terms of what we're doing. So, we all know that the Gary Oaks are a tree that the community has embraced, it's written into our vision statements and our land use goals and policies, as well as our environmental goal policies, to try and protect the Gary Oaks in our community. So, back in 1991, there was an effort to have some ordinance to protect the trees. The ordinance was very comprehensive and covered definitions, prohibitions of destroying the tree, trimming, variances, et cetera, and it stood by its own as a section. However, there's some changes made in 2005, and the reason I think they considered the changes in 2005 is because there was a lot of repetition in the Gary Oak ordinance that was adopted, that was covered by other chapters anyways. And so, I think in 2005, they decided to try and break apart that one section and fit some of these repetitive information into where they belong. So, some sections got into the environmental element of the code, and some got into the zoning section of the code, and the variance section obviously ended up in the zoning section because it is related to development, and rightfully so. So, the original language actually had a clause in there that said that you don't need a permit if there's an oak tree that's outside of the setback. So basically, if you had a tree that wasn't in the five-feet setback of your side yard, or even your front yard, then basically, you don't need a permit, you can just take that tree out and build a house. And of course, that was something that they considered in 2005, and thought, well, that doesn't seem to really protect the tree, can we do something to adjust and move the structure around so that we can still accommodate the tree? And I can see the natural process in thinking, okay, how far can you move the structure? And I think they put some limitations, and that's how that limitation was created. I don't think it came from the original ordinance. So, the limitations were in the code. However, since the code was adopted, I don't think we've had any applications to test that and see if it worked, and today, we do have an application, and it doesn't seem to work. So, we're back here again, just thinking about whether that limitation actually makes sense, and whether we should keep it in the code. And so, a general thinking process is that we have ways to address site situations, and maybe those limitations are not necessary in the code. So the proposed amendments are to remove the limitations on setbacks while considering protection of oak trees. While we're in that section, and we're making some changes, since that was adopted back in 2005, there are some things that are in that section that doesn't pertain to today's process. We don't have a board of adjustments anymore, so there's some mention in that language, and we thought while we're in this section, we'll just clean it up. So this is just some housekeeping stuff. And of course, there's some references to Planning Director. We don't have a Planning Director anymore, we have a Director of Development Services, so we kind of made those housekeeping changes, just to update the code for today's standards. So, all text amendments have review criteria, whether the amendment is consistent with the conference of plan. As I mentioned, Gary Oaks and protection of Gary Oaks is in our vision, and it's in our goals and policies, so therefore, removing limitations and finding ways to protect the trees does, is consistent with our plan. And is it, is the amendment, does the amendment substantially promote the public health, safety, and welfare? And in this case, absolutely it does. Gary Oaks is, it's an environmental element, it's unique to the area, and by protecting this habitat, we protect the environment, the wildlife, and the flora and the fauna that's around here, and that generally contributes to the well-being of the society. And of course, the society's invested in these trees, and therefore, by protecting it, it provides a benefit as well. So, the process that we followed, we've had a couple discussions at the Planning Commission at the March and April meeting. We've done our due diligence of sending the CEPA checklist for review and notified it. We also have to inform the state when we do development regulation changes, and we've done that as well. And so here we are at the public hearing. Hopefully, the Planning Commission can hold a hearing and make a recommendation tonight, and send it to the City Council, which if it does go forward tonight, it'll be scheduled for the June 28 City Council meeting. So, our recommended action is to hold a public hearing, and after taking public testimony, close the hearing, and make a recommendation to the City Council. I can answer any questions, or I can answer questions after a public comment, however the commission may choose.
Well, CAC, I think at this time, we'll just open the public hearing then. So the public hearing's open, and we'll take testimony from anybody that would like to step to the podium at this time.
Good evening, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Laura Menninger, I'm the President of the Oak Harbor Gary Oak Society. In light of the Melrose Drive project, we acknowledge that the proposed amendment to Code 19.66 appears to be a positive step in accommodating the needs of the Gary Oak on that site, and the desire of developers and city planners. Therefore, the proposed text amendment by itself should not have an adverse environmental impact on Gary Oak survivability, and a determination of nonsignificance should be warranted. Unfortunately, by itself, the proposed amendment is not sufficient to ensure that Gary Oaks survive the planning stage, also survive the construction phase. Adequate oak tree protection in adverse conditions during building or construction operations is not addressed. At-risk Gary Oaks in the Oak Harbor community need a more detailed language for protection than what the current city code offers. The existing code is vague and lacking in adequate direction. Under the paragraph heading Harm Prohibited, Oak Harbor's Tree Code 20.16, Number 2, states, "During building or construction operations, suitable protective barriers shall be erected around oak trees and shrubs which may be subject to injury." But what does suitable mean? For a critical habitat species, this language is much too vague, and does not give the public solid direction to ensure effective protection against risk of tree damage or mortality. I will now discuss photographs of construction sites containing Gary Oak trees in Oak Harbor, and you have these in your packet. Photo number one, Melrose Drive Gary Oak. No protective barrier was erected around the oak in this construction area. The tree roots were compacted by huge piles of dirt and boulders dumped within the root zone. This is not best practice because tree roots need pockets of oxygen to breathe and grow. Photo two, Southeast Ireland Street Gary Oak. No protective barrier was erected around the oak. Utility excavation was performed within the tree's root zone, which resulted in the severing of tree roots along an entire side of the tree. This was not best practice because keeping severed tree roots moist and covered helps to minimize root death and reduces tree stress and mortality during construction. Oak Bay, a suburb of Victoria, BC, shares many of the same issues as Oak Harbor in terms of urban growth and Gary Oak tree protection. Oak Bay's tree protection code is an example of reasonable, science-based tree protection. Time limitations do not allow me to elaborate, but we encourage the Planning Commission to emulate Oak Bay's bylaw when revising Oak Harbor's code. In summary, while this code amendment proposal is a good first step in mitigating the risk to Gary Oak trees during the planning process, and warrants a DNS rating when only the amendment code is considered, it is not sufficient when the goal's to ensure survivability of Gary Oaks throughout the construction process. That insufficiency, lack of robust protective municipal code, results in an adverse environmental impact on the preservation of the namesake of our community, the Gary Oak.
Thank you, Laura. I believe we did get handout, Commissioners, and... Do I have any other public comment at this time?
My name is Mike Douglas, I live here in Oak Harbor at 4695 North Park Acres Drive. Some 20, 25 years ago, me and other concerned citizens were the ones that actually started the oak tree ordinance. And I think, from that point to this point on, I think that whatever you can do to put teeth in an ordinance to protect the oak tree at any cost, that would be good, because within that time to this time, we've still lost a lot of oak trees. And I think it's imperative to our history of this town, our town is named after the oak trees, and I believe if we continue on the path that we're going, we're gonna have Oakless Oak Harbor, Oak Harbor instead of Oak Harbor. And I think it's very imperative that we try to protect and preserve what little bit of trees that we have left. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Any other comments from the audience this evening? If not, Commissioners, have any thoughts, comments?
Yes, I do have some comments. I read through the information from the Oak Bay Canada brochure, and all those protections seem pretty reasonable to me. Is it appropriate that those kind of things be put into this ordinance, or are they better
I think this code amendment was more of a surgical procedure to address a very specific situation, and not necessarily try and address the general protection of Gary Oaks as a whole, because just time-wise, that would have taken a little longer, and so, this was very specific, the shortest amount of time to try and do that. And so, that wasn't part of the overall scope of what we were trying to address with these text amendments.
That doesn't really answer my question.
So, CAC, what prevents, you know, contractors, unless they're kind of reined in sometimes, might violate a lot of this issue with the health and preservation of the oak on a piece of property they're developing? So, can we do it anywhere else? I mean, does it have to be in this amendment?
Generally, the way we've been addressing those is on an individual basis. So if we do have a construction permit for a, every tree is different in terms of its health, and its impact, and its drip line, and so on. And so we've relied on permit situations to require the applicant to get an arborist to provide the necessary information related to that particular lot, and how it would best serve protecting that tree for that particular situation, no matter what that job is, and it could vary. So, we would rely on something similar, in this instance, with a, you know, as they go through the process of trying to get the variance, to get an arborist that's familiar with construction standards and protection of oak trees, to provide the standards that the applicant would have to follow during the construction. So we rely on that type of information to specifically protect the trees under these situations.
So with the permitting process? So with the permitting process, police that then?
Yes, mostly, I mean, if the permitting process, usually for development, if it goes through a hearing process, those are where we have the conditions that would get associated with a particular permit.
So if I may ask a question, CAC, so in this instance, could the, could staff make a recommendation to the hearing examiner in terms of how some condition of approval could be placed on this particular variance request?
I think yes. The code, I think, allows us to place conditions on a permit when considering these, the hearing examiner can do that, place conditions, absolutely.
And so we could, we could structure a condition of approval for his consideration that would indicate that the applicant should retain an arborist to identify site-specific protection details for this particular situation?
That is correct. We would, we would definitely consider something like that because we want them to go through the education process of knowing what it takes to protect the oak tree during the construction. So we'd rather have them hire an arborist that, that can work with them and provide the necessary information that we can live with and they can live with.
So another question, particularly in the southeast section of town, there's a lot of large lots that meet the standards for being split into two, maybe three separate building parcels. I know that when Melrose area was developed, there was at least one area in there that was designated as a community park. And unfortunately, at the time that was done, the community park wasn't located at the same place as the tree is. If they had had more foresight, maybe they could have put that area apart around the tree and it would have been better protected. So I'm wondering, when you look at a property for being, you know, subdivided, is there a process where the tree is identified in advance so that protections can be built into the plot lines? You know, we're in the process right now of looking at this Marin Woods project, which has already been approved, you know, the initial phases. And I realize that there's probably not any Gary Oaks over there because of where it's located, but, you know, or could developer potentially, you know, lay out all the plot lines and have a Gary Oak in the middle of it, and then you're stuck with a situation where you got to give them a variance or they can't develop it.
The Melrose is a unique situation, and following what happened during the review process is interesting, looking up the notes in terms of how that actually got missed. And there's various things that we can kind of decipher from, from the notes that could have led to that being not caught during the subdivision process. But yes, to answer your question, we do look at those, we do look at, so if somebody came in with a subdivision of a large lot in the older part of town that has a Gary Oak tree, we definitely look at it and try and work the lot lines in such a way that it doesn't end up with a tree in the middle of the property. Now, I can't say that'll work 100% of the time, but absolutely, we do look at that. That's part of our review process and looking at it and offering comments to the applicant to try and find ways to mitigate that or prevent it from any, any harm as much as we can, yes.
Thank you.
My, my first comment follows exactly with, with what Hal just mentioned. As I drove through the Melrose development, it was, it was very obvious to me that that tree should have been noticed and it should have been planned around. I think that we're addressing a very specific situation by an applicant who has put themselves in this position, and it should have been foreseen. My comment was going to be that they should have put the little park area around this tree. By changing any of this code, are we going to put ourselves in a position where developers can continue doing this? Can they isolate an area that has a tree in it, maximize their development potential, and then at the end, come to us and say, hey, we need, we need a variance, we need to do something with this tree, whatever it may be, that with some forethought during the initial planning process, they should have been able to protect the tree and, and maximize their development around that? I think you've already answered that, but, but that was my, my biggest comment. Another question is, how much does the age of a tree play in the role of setback considerations, et cetera? When I look at the tree at Melrose Place, it looks to be very much, or I shouldn't say very much, less mature than a lot of the trees in the southeast neighborhoods. And you look at the size differential between that tree on Melrose and the trees down on Eighth or Ninth, it's a, it's a pretty massive discrepancy. Is this a young tree? Is it an unhealthy tree? I don't know any of those answers, but my assumption at looking at other oak trees is this could be a much larger tree in 50 or 100 years. If we allow building to encroach on this small tree at this stage in its life, what does that do 50 years down the road or, or some other time? And so does that age of the tree play any role in, in how we make these decisions? Any, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the age of the tree plays, we don't have any code requirements specific to, you know, age of the trees. We want to protect all Gary Oaks as best as we can. They are long-living trees, and a tree that is 30 or 40 doesn't, 30 or 40 years old doesn't make it less valuable than a tree that's around for 100 years or more. We want to protect them all as best as we can. During construction times, if the applicant claims that a tree is not healthy or isn't a, you know, we do get a lot of phone calls like, you know, saying, you know, this Gary Oak seems like it's not healthy and we think we should take it down. And even though it looks a certain way, we still ask people to go through and get arborist reports and things like that to, to tell us for sure that there's something going on with this tree. It's, it's failing in some way, it's rotting in other ways before we can make a decision on whether something can be done with the tree or not. So every tree is different. We try to protect every tree that we can, and age is not a, is not an issue when we, when we're working with it.
Okay. The reason I bring up age, being, being that this tree is so small and looking at the discrepancy in size between it and some of the more mature trees in the area, this tree is only going to get larger, right? So by allowing a small setback currently, are we prohibiting its future growth? Are we setting ourselves up for potential problems down the road when this tree could go from a 30-foot diameter drip line to, say, 100-foot diameter drip line? And in looking at some of the properties on the southeast end of town, it's very obvious that, that some of those trees have coexisted with structures within five or 10 feet for, for 60 or 70 years. And it seems to be okay, but I'm, I'm not an arborist, I don't understand how those two things interrelate. And are we setting ourselves up for problems by allowing developers to develop close to young trees? And maybe that needs to be viewed differently than mature trees?
As you pointed out, the older part of town is a great example of how trees and structures coexist, and I wouldn't necessarily look at it as a problem we're setting ourselves. We have to continually monitor, regulate, and monitor the trimming and so on. So that's something that the city has taken upon itself to do, to protect these oak trees. And so we will have, as long as we have Gary Oak trees, we will have that kind of interaction with property owners and, and structures and, and oak trees. And I, I'm not viewing it as a problem necessarily, but that's something that we have to continually deal with in protecting oak trees. We're not going to have 100% perfect code that is going to prevent any oak trees from ever dying or, or creating a harmful situation for structures. So we have to do it property by property, and that's just part of what we have to do here in Oak Harbor.
CAC, do you mind if I add just one comment, please? From a perspective standpoint, this is the only instance of this type of situation, certainly since 2005 with the last major look at the oak tree code. So we're, we're 12 years past since that time, and, and I can honestly say that I believe it's also the only instance in my almost 17 years here where we've had a Gary Oak tree as, as a tree on a brand-new single-family lot. So this is a rather, rather unusual set of circumstances. I think by and large, what we deal with far more frequently is the situation where it's an existing home and somebody wishes to maybe add a room onto it. Or probably the more frequent occurrence is, has nothing to do with building construction and it's more about how is the tree affecting the existing house? So I just wanted to maybe provide a little perspective that while these are all good questions and excellent concerns, this is a really unusual circumstance that we're, we're really addressing in this particular context.
Well, I would agree with that. It probably is very unusual at this point, but as the city continues to grow in density, and like Hal mentioned, there are a lot of, of large lots in the southeast corner of town that do have oak trees. And so this could become a more pressing issue in the future as, as we increase our density in that area. I guess my only other comment before I give up the mic here, we've talked a lot about preservation, but how long can we continue to preserve the same trees if there's no new trees going in? So I look around in the areas where there are oak trees, and the only young trees that I see are out where we just planted the grove north of town. You know, we can put all this emphasis on to, under preservation, but as these trees are maturing and aging, and as we saw today with the, with the limb drop on Eighth Avenue, the trees aren't getting any younger, they're only starting to fail. We can put a ton of effort into preserving them, but to what end if we're not bringing new trees into the mix?
Absolutely. A good point. We do have some code requirements in new developments and multifamily developments to plant Gary Oaks whenever the habitat would allow or the space would allow it. But it's also beneficial to have people in the community that, just like the Gary Oak Society, that do promote Gary Oaks and, and encourage people to have Gary Oaks in their, in their yards. It's unusual for a city to come in and require something like that. And so roles are different in terms of who plays what role in trying to promote Gary Oaks. And I think it's part of the community's duty to try and, and promote the growth of it as opposed to the city requiring, because it looks, it is kind of different. I mean, requiring something like that proactively, you could do it with development when you have something, somebody comes to the city for a permit or something like that, we can have some, we do have, like I said, codes in place for encouraging Gary Oaks. But to generally promote the, the planting and growing of Gary Oaks, it's, it's, it's better as a community-driven process than a city-driven requirement.
And I guess I'll say, I wasn't thinking more along the lines of a requirement that we proposed, but I did read in some of this section about incentives, you know, reducing parking spaces required for trees conserved and that sort of thing. Maybe it's a discussion to have at some point about the types of incentives that could be offered for, for new plantings or, or other things. I know, just living in the southeast corner of town for many years, I had many neighbors that, that swore they would never allow a new oak into their property because it was so intrusive. They, they felt restricted with their property rights because of the presence of that tree. And, and I, I just think there needs to be some other alternative to, to create incentive or, or somehow make it feel less intrusive to the property owners.
Absolutely. I was going to bring up that point. We do have trimming permits for oak trees, and so the parks manager, Hank Nytum, and I go out and review every application with the property owner, and we look at the trimming of, of trees, and we hear both sides. We hear the need for more Gary Oaks, and we also then hear about what the requirements on the challenges that property owners have, that they have to go through this process when, when they think that the tree is an imminent danger to their structure and they would rather just have it cut down and not have to deal with the permitting process. So we hear both sides in the, in the field, and so a point well made.
I realize that this here is unusual, as you were saying, as far as, you know, this meeting that we're having or this plan that we're looking at and stuff like that. But the one thing that we may want to sit there and look at later on is getting with the Gary Oak Society under what they wrote here and start adopting that, maybe not all of it, but start looking at that, their recommendations to input that into our code for later on, just like Mr. Mann was saying, you know, we are getting bigger. You know, there is more and more people in Oak Harbor. If I go to Walmart, I don't go down 20. It takes way too long anymore unless it's nine o'clock at nighttime. But we are getting bigger. The city is growing. So we need to sit there and start planning future growths now with some of this, some of these, some of these things like this here where it's much easier to get together, get items together than later on when we're like this here and we have a very short time to make a recommendation.
Absolutely. I mean, it's definitely a delicate balance with infill development. We want to encourage it as much as possible, but we have challenges in protecting the environment in that process as well. And so it's a delicate balance between trying to make it easy to have density, at the same time, protect the environment. So definitely, it's something that we'll continue to work on with growth and, and other circumstances.
Commissioners, any other comments? So are we prepared to make a motion? Hal?
I move that draft ordinance number 1803 be forwarded to the city council with a planning commission recommendation for approval as proposed.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
We have a discussion on that.
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
My only comment is, is there a way that we can attach to this, the recommendation for city staff to come up with a solution for protecting that tree during construction? I don't know what the process would be for that. I mean, I'm all in favor of, of moving this and, and giving that protection, but is there a way to, to also bring forward an idea to, so look at section 20?
Sure, there are at least, at least two paths there, and I'm assuming you mean specifically for that, for that particular one. At least two paths forward. One is, we certainly heard your concerns loud and clear, and I'm confident that we would reflect those to the hearing examiner. If you were comfortable with that, that's all we would need to do. If you wanted something more, more formal than that, I would maybe suggest something outside of this particular motion as a, as some sort of separate request of staff that you would vote on. My hesitancy is I don't want to tie something that's going, that's a code amendment legislative to, to a quasi judicial permit thing in one action by you. That's my only hesitancy.
That makes sense.
So again, I think we, we've heard your, your concerns, and we share those. You heard CAC say that, you know, we want to require the appropriate steps, and so I'm very confident that we will make that recommendation to the hearing examiner.
But Steve, would that be ongoing, say, down the road, three or four years, a similar situation occurs? Would, would we get, would the same consideration be taken?
If we find ourselves in a situation where, where, where this piece of code would be used, absent anything else in the code, that would automatically require it, and that's something that we could talk about, you know, in, in some future code amendment, back to some of Hal's earlier comments, absent anything like that, we always have the authority through the, through the variance process itself to make recommendations of conditions of approval to the hearing examiner. And we routinely do that. Some cases don't require very many, if any. Other cases, we have lots of recommended conditions of approval. And again, since the overall goal is the protection of the oak tree, you know, a, a consideration to reduce the setback so that it works in a particular situation would almost automatically follow then with a, a condition of approval for protection of the tree.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a motion and a second? As for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Also, a question. Also, I should close the public hearing on that also at this time. Okay. Next item up is the critical areas ordinance update. This is a public meeting and Senior Planner Dennis LaFever will take us through this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, Dennis LaFever, Senior Planner. This is the next installment for presentation of the critical areas ordinance, which we've been working on since late last year. As you are, I don't have a PowerPoint this evening, but as you are aware of the growth management requirement that the city review and revise, if necessary, our development regulations to make sure that they're consistent in conformance with our comprehensive plan, which we adopted last June. One of the big pieces of those development regulations that the state has a great deal of focus on is our critical areas. So we've been working on that. As, again, a brief refresher, there are five categories for our critical areas. We have wetlands, fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas, geologically hazardous areas, critical aquifer recharge areas, and frequently flooded areas. As part of this amendment package, we've also included two other chapters in Title Twenty, one that deals specifically with the definitions and the other that deals with general regulations that basically affect all of the other five chapters of the critical areas, kind of overriding considerations. To briefly go through what's in your packet this evening, we do have the draft of the proposed ordinance, eighteen oh one. It's kind of lengthy, but we needed to include all of the chapters, all of the sections that have specific amended, proposed amendments to that. The second attachment to your packet are the full chapters in strike-through underline, reason being that we only included those pieces of the chapters in the ordinance that were being affected. You could lose context if you kind of read that out of line, so we included the full chapters. Attachment three represents the chapters, again, with the recommendations incorporated in, so it's a clean read, no strike-through, no underline, but some of the members of the commission might appreciate a read of that nature. Attachment four is ordinance seventeen ninety-four, and I think I addressed this last month, where that was a key piece that addressed and made consistent our frequently flooded areas by adopting the firm map, which was back in March of seven, March seventh of this year. It also dealt with the FEMA and National Marine Fisheries Service biological opinion, which created some issue with the Endangered Species Act and flood planes. So that was included as part of your packet as well. And attachment five is a list of sources that we've integrated into our amendment process, whether we reviewed, took pieces out of there, or what have you, but it's a list of the sources that we've used to prepare this update. One of the key things that the state has emphasized pretty strongly is the use of best available science in review and update of our critical areas. Our last update was in two thousand and five, so there's been twelve years since that period and now, so there's been some substantial changes in a couple of our chapters. But what I'd like to do is touch on each of the five and kind of address what the state considers best available science, which we have incorporated in each one of our chapters. The wetlands chapter, the state considers a sample wetlands ordinance that the Department of Ecology has prepared as best available science. We've had, we have based our amended wetland chapter on that ordinance to the, to a large degree. I won't say totally, but to a large degree. For the fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas, we've used a variety of databases that are available at the state level. Fish and Wildlife has their priority habitat and species database, which is considered best available science. They continually update that list, so we incorporated that into our update. The Washington Department of Natural Resources has their heritage program maps, which deals with kind of an ecosystem approach to species and plant habitats. We've incorporated that database into our update. They also came up, they, the Department of Natural Resources came up with a new stream typing system, which we've incorporated into our update. And we also incorporated the Department of Health shellfish harvest sites maps, which is considered best available science for that resource. For the geologically hazardous areas, again, we tapped in the Department of Natural Resources. They have a variety of databases that deal with all of the geologically hazardous areas that we need to address, the steep slopes, the faults, liquefaction areas, tsunami zones, those types of areas we addressed and brought into our update process. The critical area recharge, critical aquifer recharge areas, we tapped into the resource that was basically used in two thousand and five, and that's at the county level with guidance from the Department of Ecology. But basically, not much has changed with the critical aquifer recharge areas. And again, I contacted the county hydrogeologist to ensure that their strategy and their review of where they think the moderate and high susceptibility recharge areas exist, they haven't changed since two thousand and five. And then, of course, the last one that I already have addressed is the frequently flooded areas. And again, that was dealt with through the ordinance that was passed a few months ago. So we are consistent in that is considered best available science, the flood insurance rate maps that we adopted, as far as making sure that they were the most recent firm maps, and these were that we adopted are considered best available science. So with that, that's the packet. We do have an opportunity to discuss some of this this evening. We are also scheduling a public hearing before this group, June twenty-seventh. This material will be placed online this week so that the folks who may be listening or watching have an opportunity to review this information as well. But then we are also tracking this consistent with the City Council. A similar presentation to the council will be made tomorrow. And they will be hearing, before a public hearing, early July at their meeting, this same ordinance. So with that, I would try to answer any questions that you may have. Again, I apologize for the size of the packet, but just trying to make sure that all the material is in front of you so that you can make sure that you can read it to your, at your leisure.
At the risk of getting in the weeds and overthinking this, and I certainly don't want to micromanage it, but the question in page ten of thirty-eight in the redline version, definitions seventy-eight, seventy-nine, and on down eighty-three through eighty-five, you use the word manipulation in those definitions. On the page prior and line, or two pages prior, on line sixty-seven, you use the word alteration instead of manipulation. And manipulation has somewhat negative connotation, whatever that word is.
Connotation.
Thank you. And maybe there's a scientific need to use that word as opposed to alteration, but I just think maybe we should look at that. And elsewhere, later on, page twenty-four of thirty-eight, and that's redline section, you use the word enhance instead of alter. So I don't know that we would necessarily want to put a positive or negative connotation on some of these things, but maybe you do. I don't know the real reason.
I'll review those.
Thank you.
Yep. And get back to you with a response on that.
On page twenty-eight of thirty-eight, old paragraph three, you use, you removed Gary Oaks from the classification of critical areas. And I just am curious is why that was removed?
As far as under old item three?
Yeah.
Is that your reference?
Uh-huh.
It, I also did a shift to that section. It's still a standalone chapter, twenty point one six in Title Twenty, and it still has the same regulatory effect as we discussed earlier tonight. None of that has changed. I just did a manual shift because that's a classification under the fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas. It allows local jurisdictions to identify areas of local significance. And we do have that included in one of those sections here.
Page ten, I think.
Is it on? Well, even under the classification list that we were looking at, oh, it's number four. It's habitats and species of local importance is identified by the city in accordance with twenty twenty-five oh two oh. Those are the regulations that allow the city to make a species significant locally.
So the fact that it's in that section means it doesn't need to be in this section because it's redundant?
That's correct. Yep.
And then where you say, somewhere on that page, I thought, or maybe later, that it's something to the fact of trees that are less than twelve inches diameter and four foot height above the ground are considered significant trees, that other chapter would say that Gary Oaks are always considered significant trees regardless of their diameter? Is that correct?
I will have to research into that, Commissioner, and see where that is specified as far as.
Because, I mean, Gary Oaks grow so slowly that, you know, the thing's going to be fifty years old before it's twelve inches diameter.
I can help with that.
Oh, I see where you see that. Yes.
I can help with that if you'd like, Dennis.
Okay, Steve.
So the Gary Oak is significant regardless of its size. The twelve inches of diameter, four feet above grade is the typical standard used to determine when a non-Gary Oak tree is significant or not. And that actually ties back to our landscape code and our land clearing code.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, that was page thirty-four of thirty-eight.
Yes.
Twenty point twenty-eight. So the last thing I've got is, and this is almost a curiosity thing more than anything else, the geologically hazardous areas. My understanding is that pretty much all the Puget Sound area is subject to earthquakes. We've got faults that run right across the middle, the north end of the island. So I see some laughing already.
I'd rather do my house.
So for purposes of critical areas, how do we determine what an earthquake hazard is?
That's a good question.
I mean, obviously, we can't have the whole island.
Yeah, we can't identify everything. I think it has a lot to do with some of the building requirements. And I'm not well-versed on the IBC, but I know I had Brian Lee, our building official, take a look at that section and he incorporated some wording. So I don't know if it comes through that avenue of, you know, how we deal with geologically hazardous seismic zones. I would think so.
So doesn't building code pretty much encompass the whole north end of Whidbey Island? I mean, it probably takes into account overbuilding when it comes to earthquakes.
I believe it does at this point in time, yeah.
Because, just because you just don't know.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I could, I could help a little bit if you would like?
Sure.
Okay. So yes, Chairman Wassinger, the building code has different seismic zones and that's just sort of daily life in the northwest, let alone the north Whidbey. From a geologically hazardous perspective, I think our code focuses more on the steep slopes and the liquefaction because it, because the earthquake stuff is so readily addressed already through, through the building code, right? And so we're not going to be able to say, because we're in a geologically active area, you can't build a house there, because you're right, we're not building any houses anywhere. That's why we don't focus on not having that used. The building code is intended to make them safe. We focus more on these other two things that I mentioned.
Thank you.
Any other comments at this time?
I think this was pretty much already addressed, but in jurisdiction, we removed Gary Oak trees as a critical area regulated by the chapter, but then it looks like it was reintroduced under the fish and wildlife habitat conservation area.
It basically just moved the title.
It was just shifting it into the right category.
But none of the regulations have changed. It's still considered a critical area of local significance. And for the record, I'm sure there's going to be some changes as we get more pairs of eyes looking at this. What my intention would be in your next packet would be a revised proposed ordinance. A list of changes will come to you then as well.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Yep. The last item up this evening is the, I believe, CAC Kamekton is going to talk to us about the park plan update. This is also a public meeting.
Yes. Thank you very much. At the last meeting, I provided a presentation of the park plan update and we covered tier one. The commission members, we're just going through the existing park plan and just kind of going through how it's laid out and what are some of the contents in that so that we can just get the commission familiar with the current plan so that as we go through the update, you're more familiar with what's being changed and you can consider some options while you're, while we're going through the update process. Doing something similar with the park board as well and with the city council. So I'm hoping that we can get everybody up to speed on the current plan so that when we go through the changes, we can kind of address them, kind of as a board and commission all at the same time. So I'll go through and continue on with the, with the update of the existing plan. I have slides from the previous presentation and just to refresh your memory, I'll go through them real quick. Again, the structure is based on, you know, the GMA requirements and there are requirement to update them every six or seven years. We've taken a tier approach to arranging the plans so that we don't have to go through and rewrite the plan every six or seven years and we can just update elements that we think we need to update. And they contain long-term strategies. They contain tools that you could use later. Not all of the goals and policies are intended for immediate implementation. Some of these things take time and you want to just keep them in the plan so that you can find the right opportunity to implement them. So the tier one has the vision, guiding principles, goals and policies, and the recommended plan. I've covered some of those in the previous presentation. We'll go through the tier two process today and go through the existing conditions, the level of service and level of attention. At some, at one of the later meetings, I'll come back with the recommended plan and the six-year plan because those are kind of derived from all the existing conditions. So I'm, there, so I'm doing it a little out of sequence on how the plan is structured, but we will cover some of those at a later, at maybe at the next meeting. So the vision, I think, at the last meeting, we provided the planning commission with the vision from the park plan and the vision from the comprehensive plan, just as a way to try and see if we can make sure that they compare to each other and if there are things that we need to incorporate into the vision of the park plan from the comp plan, this would be the best time to do it. And we can address those if you have any comments, either at this meeting or at the next meeting. At some point, we'll come back with an exercise to actually look at it so that you have a chance to provide input. Guiding principles, this is again, some, you know, usually park plans or most plans will have some general statements that's undeniable. They're just great for the community. All communities do them. They're usually listed in the goals and policies. What we've done here is just have them as guiding principles in the park plan because they just stand the test of time and they're just quality-related statements that every plan could use. So most of these are in the guiding principles of the plan. Then we have the comprehensive plan goals. They are actually goals that have been carried over from previous park plans compiled, so they're not just something that we came so they're not just something that we came up in 2008 when we adopted them. They are a compilation of previous plans. There are various kinds of goals, and they could be continuing or they could be conclusive. And the end results of some of these goals could end up with a construction, maybe an acquisition of property or approvals of some sort. So there are various different types of goals in there. Again, like I said, some of them are intended over, to be done over a period of long time. So tier two, tier two is kind of the workhorse of the, of the plan where you kind of look at all your existing facilities and you incorporate community input and you are kind of trying to find out which direction you want to go. And tier two is, is where you kind of look for that information. So what does tier two have? It has the inventory, like every plan, you want to know what you have. The inventory categorizes all the existing parks and its facilities. And if you have a copy of the park plan, you can see all the parks listed, the areas and all the, whether they have a playground, whether they have a tennis court, all of that is documented. So that provides and gives us an existing conditions kind of snapshot. The current plan has all the parks divided into quadrants, like the northeast quadrant, southeast quadrant. And that was just done as a way to categorize and kind of assess whether all parts of the city have adequate parks to serve their, the population. I can foresee some changes in this because if you remember when we did the 2016 update, we created neighborhoods section in the land use element where we created. And I can, and I think what we'll do with this update is to categorize the parks by those neighborhoods. So now we'll have a link between the land use element and the park plan. And maybe they'll start to provide some information from a neighborhood aspect on whether neighborhoods are being served by these parks. So that'll be interesting to do with this update. The inventory includes Marina. This is a parks recreation and open space plan, so the recreational aspect of it covers the Marina. So we do include the Marina in the, in the park plan. We also take an inventory of the school facilities. That was an important comment that was made during the update is, yes, we have city parks and we have city facilities, but the community uses a lot of the school facilities as well, and therefore we should kind of document those. And so we have all those facilities listed in our current plan as well. So do the facilities that the North Whidbey Recreation District has. We also, as a community, use county, Island County parks, and we use state parks as well. So it's good to have those in our inventory as something that our community uses and acknowledge that these are important components supporting our park system. And of course, NAS Whidbey has recreational facilities as well, and then you have open space and trails. So we kind of have a comprehensive list of, of what's available to the community.
At the last meeting, I, I brought up the, the point that maybe it would be nice to overlay some of the private parks within neighborhoods. Is that not appropriate when doing this inventory because they are private and most of these are public facilities? Even though the community is using those, those private parks within those, those neighborhoods?
We, well, it's, we can list them. I'm not entirely sure, you know, we have a lot of goals and policies in terms of working with other public jurisdictions in terms of overlapping our level of service, using their facilities to maybe accommodate for our deficiencies and so on. So there's a lot of relationship between some of the parks that we're listing. The private parks are, they serve a neighborhood. They're not necessarily viewed as a, serving a wider community. But from an inventory standpoint, we can definitely use them or list them. Whether they end up with some kind of policy or something like that is probably, you know, still debatable in terms of whether we want to have something like that.
Sure. And, and I don't know that it's a good idea or not, but when I look at this, you know, our, our community's utilizing those private parks in the same way that they are North Whidbey Parks and Rec District or, or some school facilities, but we aren't accounting for them anywhere within this. It's just a curiosity.
I think one way that we could look at it is that the inventory isn't an inventory for its own sake, right? So eventually what it does is it, it factors into our level of service analysis. Are we meeting the needs of our community? And if not, how do we go about doing it? Where should we put new parks? How do we fund them? We, we feel somewhat comfortable listing the public agencies around us because as a general rule, that's pretty stable. And we can say that there's some, as CAC said, there's some crossover between different agencies, whether it's through informal agreements or actual formal inter-local agreements. The private spaces, we don't have that degree of certainty. And so we wouldn't want to include them beyond the inventory because it, because we shouldn't factor that as part of our level of service and make decisions on capital projects based on that park being there if it would go away someday.
The only comment I've got on that is as far as, say NAS Whidbey, for example, that's not open up to the public. Some parts of it are, but some parts of it that may be used as parks is not open to the public. And as far as with the state parks, you know, there is additional fees on that there. So is there something that distinguishes, you know, that there is additional fees, you know, for some of these, like with the North Whidbey parks are in Recreation District, you know?
The, the way I see the, the inventory and some of our goals and policies being matched up, for example, and I'll go over, I think I do have a slide of, of a plan to try and connect trails to various parks around Oak Harbor to create a network of trails. And so by listing some of these state parks or county parks, we have plans to, you know, work with these agencies maybe in trail connections and, and so on. So, so we kind of list them for those purposes to identify that we have these resources around the community and that we can plan to try and connect them. But we don't have any regulatory authority or we don't have any other information necessarily that from a city standpoint, we want to overlay or try to influence those agencies in doing anything different. And that's not what the park plan is intended to do. So, so the listing is primarily to acknowledge that there is an asset that is around the community and that as a community, we have, we could have goals to try and use these assets as best as we can from a city standpoint through connections and so on. So I may, I don't know if I answered your question, but I'm not sure we need to go through in detail and try to find out what these facilities do, if they have fees. You know, those kind of things are not under our jurisdiction to either influence or amend or change. And so we don't go into that depth of detail when we list an inventory of parks. Did I answer your question or maybe not?
Kind of, but still the, the same thing is if we're, if we're putting out something for somebody to look at and say, walk on the trails, and I don't know if you go into the state, I know if you drive into the state parks, there is signs to sit there and say $30, $10, whatever. But as far as if we have paths that go into these same places and there's no sign up there, then are, are, you know, people getting fined for going in there? And it's not, you're right, it's not our job to sit there and say, hey, you can't go here. I mean, but under the same aspect, I was just looking at, you know, is there something on there or especially Whidbey Island? Because if somebody trespasses under the federal reservation out there, I mean, that's a federal fine, you know, that's, that's a felony. And that's really my biggest concern is as far as with, you know, going out there, that there is something that people know that the federal reservation, there is parts of it, but not all of it's open and stuff like that. So I may be going too far into it than I need to.
It's a little detailed, but we do add some of those details in the plan, whether it's, you know, a citizen in the community would read into those details and find out about it. For example, I'll give you a good example, the, the Mailer Trail goes through the Navy property. And we do have in our plan that it is part of the Navy land and, you know, we have an agreement with the Navy to try and maintain it for public access. But if they choose to close it, they close it. I mean, so, you know, it's not something just because we, you know, we can influence when they open it. We can, we have an agreement with them, which, and it's mostly informal because we did have a formal agreement that expired, but we still continue to maintain access. But they can close it at any time, and it's mentioned in the plan, but we don't have influence over a decision like that.
Okay, you explain it because, I mean, it's in there, and that's my biggest thing.
Yeah.
And I haven't read it, so, you know, I failed to sit there and keep up on that.
Absolutely.
That's why I'm asking more questions than I would have if I would have read it.
No, absolutely. Those are the details. The plan has a lot of little, little details in it, and it's mostly for planning purposes and for transferring information over a period of time. You know, when, when I look at old plans, I'm looking for what happened in certain instances. And having some information in the plan will help me understand why certain things were done in a certain way or why a situation is, you know, today, you know? So some of these plans are, do carry that information. And so it is helpful to have some challenges in there if we do list some inventory and we think that it's, that the access could be dependent on something else. We try and make sure that we, we note it so that the public is aware of those situations.
Dennis, that answer, perfect.
Level of service. So like any other utility plan, especially like the transportation plan, there is a level of service for parks as well. It's a way to determine if needs are being met by the community. And we have, in our current plan, two ways to kind of determine the level of service. One is a kind of access and proximity location type service, spatial service. And another is a quantity type service in terms of facilities and parks and things like that. You know, there's, there are some standards per thousand population that, national standards that are used. So we use both level of service standards in our current plan to try and assess whether we have, whether we're meeting our, our needs for the population. So the spatial-based level of service, it varies for community parks and neighborhood parks. Of course, you know, how much of an area is served by a particular park is determined by the size of the community. So if you have a really, really large community, your community park may serve a larger, larger area because, just because of the size of the population that you're trying to serve. And then for a smaller community, you have a smaller service area. So for, for the size of community that we have, for Oak Harbor, we have a, a level of service of one mile for community parks and a half mile for neighborhood parks. That seems to be reasonable compared to like other larger cities. They may have like three mile radius for a community park and a one mile radius for a neighborhood park. So, so for the size of community for Oak Harbor, that's kind of the spatial ratio that, that the current plan has. One of the things taken into, and this is just an exception for our plan is because we have the seaplane base that kind of extends, you know, to the east, and a lot of that area is not accessible to the public. And so when we determine area and we're determining area of service, we have excluded the seaplane base because it doesn't make sense to try and provide service there where we really don't have a jurisdiction and can't do it anyway. So that's just a, this is small detail. Like I said, you know, we've accepted the, the seaplane base from that. And we have different kind of community parks too, and they serve different purposes. So, you know, we have Fort Nugent Park that has recreational facilities and so on, and it is a community park and serves a larger area. Parks like Smith Park and Hal Ramley Park are listed as community parks because they're community assets, but they don't have necessarily the recreational facilities, just like Fort Nugent does. So we have not included them in the spatial analysis. They're just community parks from their value standpoint, not necessarily from their service standpoint. So just a few exceptions, FYI.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Is Victory Homes, that's military land, right?
Victory Homes is.
Yeah, out east. So do we have, they provide their own park services there?
Yes, the Navy has their own.
So that's not included in this either then, just like the seaplane base is not?
Yeah. I consider the seaplane base east of Regatta. All of that is the seaplane base.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
So as I mentioned, community parks has a one mile service area, neighborhood parks, half mile, and trails also has a half mile service area. Apologize, I tried to, that seemed okay on my computer.
It's because you were sitting this far.
So basically what that says is, you know, the different type of level of services, just like we have in transportation level of service, A, B, and C, and D for intersections and traffic lights in terms of how they allow traffic to flow through. Just like that, we have level of service one through five for the spatial-based analysis. And so if 80% of your city is within the half mile, within the half mile radius of a trail, then you're on a level, level of service one. Similar for neighborhood parks. You know, if you have 80% of the city covered by neighborhood parks, then you're doing pretty well in terms of quantity of parks, and so is the community park. So that kind of is the grad, graduation or graduate, grade in terms of leveling the level of service. So the, the map to the, to the left is the service area for community parks, which is in our existing plan, and, and those are mile circles. And they are drawn pretty much around the three main community parks that we have, which is Fort Nugent, Winjama Park, and Volunteer Park are the major community parks that we have that have the recreational facilities and large enough to serve that community purpose. What you will notice is there's an area. If I can get this working. Oh, there you go. To the west and northwest of the city that is currently outside of the service area of, of community parks. So that was something that is noted in our current plan as a deficiency. Again, the, the map to the right is the service area for trails. And again, that's just along, the, the only trail that we have in Oak Harbor, which is the Waterfront Trail. And half mile is the service area for that. So we can see that it is a deficiency in our plan, that we don't actually have too many trails in Oak Harbor to serve the community. The neighborhood service area is a little different here. Half mile is the radius for the coverage, spatial coverage for neighborhood plans. But neighborhood plans are a little unique, and if you, and this goes to our vision statement, right? One of the statements in our vision statement is like a small-town feel, you know, that what is the small-town feel? And I think it applies here in this consideration. The, the way I think about it is you have a neighborhood park in your neighborhood, and you'd love for your kids to just go and play in the neighborhood park. Now, would you send your kids crossing Highway 20 to go to a neighborhood park? You probably won't. So even if you have a neighborhood park in your neighborhood or within the half mile radius of your house, but if it's across a barrier like a street or something, then I don't consider it to be part of that neighborhood. So when we look at neighborhood parks, we have to kind of look at, okay, is it, you know, we just don't want to draw circles around every, every neighborhood park and say the city's covered. We wanted to take into account the barriers that prevents something from being a neighborhood park. So if you put in all the, the barriers, streets around the parks and cut the, the circles off, you'll find that the green areas or the yellow areas are what is served by neighborhood parks right now. They're within the neighborhood, they're accessible. But the areas that have the orange are the ones that are deficient of neighborhood parks. And, you know, some of the notable areas are the areas east of Midway and south of Whidbey. It's an established old neighborhood, but if you really think about it, there are actually no neighborhood parks in there. A similar area is the scenic heights area. It's also, doesn't have a neighborhood park. Now, do they have other parks in there? Absolutely, they do have some. But if there's an opportunity for neighborhood parks in this area, that would, it would be a good time for us to think about it because the plan has identified those deficiencies. Ratio-based level of service, this is again from national, this is quantity as opposed to the spatial and the area coverage. Community parks, national average is about four acres per 1,000, and neighborhood parks are one acre per, per thousand population. That's kind of the standard. That's kind of the standard. And, you know, we have tables in the park plan that kind of compares the two thousand to two thousand and eight, you know, what is the shift? How many acres of park did we have in the year two thousand? How many did we have in two thousand and eight? What is the population growth? And are we meeting our population need with our parks? And in the analysis, we found that in, in two thousand and eight, when we did this, that neighborhood parks, we have plenty of neighborhood parks for our size community, were really good on neighborhood parks, and it actually serves most of our neighborhoods. However, community parks from, from at least a quantity wise, it said were kind of eight acres underneath the, the threshold. And you can see from that spatial based analysis where we have Fort Nugent, Winjama, and Volunteer, most of the city's covered, but we do have a section that is not covered. And maybe that is a deficiency that we have to work on trying to get the next community park online so that we can meet that need. Recreational facilities, this table is again in the park plan. It goes through and, and lists all the, the recreational facilities that we have. And again, this is based on some national standards and we compared the two thousand to two thousand and eight and population and, and tried to identify just based on numbers what the need is. Now, it doesn't mean that we're, you know, just because the numbers say that we should have nine tennis courts that we should go out and, and do it. It's still a community choice in terms of whether we do have an active tennis community and whether that's the demand and whether we should actually meet it. That's still a, a community choice. Just because the numbers say it, it doesn't mean that we have to go and do it. But if somebody comes forward and says, you know, I'd like to build a park and I'd like the city to build tennis courts, you can look at this and say, yeah, we do have a deficiency in this and it's an opportunity that we can take to, to get into this endeavor. So it's just an indication of the current situation. Level of attention, this is, this is a maintenance tool that we can use to help us make decisions. It's, I call it a level of attention just because that's what the national standard kind of calls it, a level of attention, but you can call it level of maintenance as well. That's kind of what that is. There are levels from one to six, you know, highest level of attention to lowest level. And this is just a way to look at when we add parks or when we have the community demanding a certain level of maintenance for certain parks, you always want to try and match your resources with the demand. It's not that you can't provide that level of maintenance, but do you have the current resources to do it? So if you, so I think I have, well, I don't have the table, it was a little large table, but it's in the plan. Every park has already what we have as the existing level of attention. What do we do, you know, for maintaining weeds? What do we do for mowing? What do we do for all that? So we have an existing level of maintenance that our parks division does, and we've quantified that. And so with every park you add or with everything that you want to increase in terms of level of maintenance, you have to look at what resources you, you need to add if you want that desired thing. So this is just a tool to help identify that when that need, need arises. Existing conditions on parks, and again, it's in the, in the plans, we've listed every park and we've listed all the facilities it has and potentially some improvements that every park could use. And so by listing all the needs that we have, it doesn't mean that we have to go out and do those in six years, but when the opportunity does come up for every park in terms of what we can do, we look at those existing conditions and go, okay, this, this park could use a new playground, this park could use a new shelter, this has been noted in our plan. Is there some grant funding? Yes, somebody's given a grant funding for shelters and we could use it for this park. We identified it in the plan. And so therefore we have a justification to go and apply for that grant because most of grants will say, we'll give you money, but what, is it in your plan? Is it in your capital improvement plan? Is it in your six-year plan? You know, they ask all those questions and so we have these documented so we can, we can use opportunities like that. The last thing I want to just share with the commission today is about the survey that we did with the last plan in two thousand and eight. We did a, a community survey. And the, the results of those survey are in the park plan. And again, this font seemed much bigger on my computer. So just some, some, some of the highlights to, to touch on, you know, the, we wanted to find out in the, in the survey on when parks are used most and when they're used less. It seems logical that we would know that parks are used more in the summer and less in the winter. But, you know, to what extent are we not using parks in the winter? And, you know, it's, it's almost a thirty-five percent increase in the summer when we use our parks. And is that resource not being utilized during the winter? Can we do something during the winter to increase the use of the parks? That's more of the question we should be asking in order to be able to not necessarily add to our inventory, but use our existing inventory more efficiently. So that's just a, a way to determine where to, to put more resources and make efficient use of our assets. Of course, community parks were used more frequently than other parks, just because of the facilities that they have and, and so on. So that was very evident in that. And that also established the need for community parks. So we determined that we need eight acres of community parks and that it is used a lot more in our communities, a good justification to try and invest in more community parks in the future. We also took a, a survey on what are the activities? What is the most popular activity that people like in terms of recreation? Because you want to try and find out what that is and try to meet that need. And of course, hiking, jogging, and walking was the most popular activity. And if you look at our trails, we have only one trail and it serves only a half mile, so to speak. And the people living on the north side of town, if they want a trail, they'd have to drive down in order to use the trail. So something that the community should continually think about is like, can we add more trails? Because that is one of the activities that's, that, and we'll, we're going to do the same survey for this plan update. And so we'll get a kind of a benchmark over time and see how things have maybe changed and maybe are there trends changing? And if some of the trends are being reinforced by these surveys, then it just tells the community that we need to look at these. These are real needs that we're, we're determining here that we should try and meet. So of all the parks that we have, state parks, county parks, city parks, we've asked, you know, where do you guys more, if you had a choice, where would you go? And a lot of people choose city parks. So it's, it's a great thing to know that we, we should invest in our, our park system and not just rely on some of the other parks that are out in the county or the state to meet our needs. They, people do choose to go to city parks because they're closer, they have better facilities, and so we should continue to provide that because that's what the community desires. They did note that the trails are not conveniently located, which makes sense because they have to drive to it. They also said that the general conditions of parks in Oak Harbor are good. They like it. We'll see how, this time the survey answers that question and then we can gauge that we're continuing to do a good job or should we do something different if that scale has gone down or up? They, everybody satisfied with the quantity of parks. I think from our level of service analysis, we determined that there's adequate neighborhood parks. But they do, did mention the lack of trails, the need for more trails, and that kind of links up with the hiking, jogging, and hiking. So that's a real, real need in the community. We've listed a bunch of things asking, you know, what would, what would be your priority in terms of things that the park system should care for? And forest areas were definitely number one. That came to be ranked as one. They'd like to see more forested areas maintained. Trails came in second, and then other was mentioned as third. And when you dig into what the other was, there was more comments on trails, there were some comments on tennis courts, playgrounds were also very popular, swimming pool was mentioned, soccer fields. And of all the things that they listed in other, at least fifty percent of them had indoor something to them, you know, so which was very interesting. Again, you know, going back to our parks being used more in the summer and less in the winter, again, you try and make the link to see, do we need indoor facilities to help, you know, more efficient use? Again, you know, this is, these are just indicators and you, you look for opportunities on when you can invest in something like that or when you can partner with somebody to provide a service. The plan backs up some of those, some of those ideas. We asked about funding in the last survey and, and a lot of people thought that the property tax shouldn't be used for parks, more than fifty percent of them said. They rather, and forty-six of them indicated that a sales tax or a user fee would be, they would, they would be supportive of that funding to use for parks. And that's just a kind of information from the public, whether we do something with that or not is up for the city council to determine how that happens, but at least that gives them an idea of what people are thinking out there. So that kind of is just my information for, for today. I'm hoping at the next meeting that I can cover the six-year plan and some of the goals that were listed in the plan and what we've accomplished and what we haven't and what the recommended plan is. So I'll come back with that at the, at the next meeting and share those, those with you. But just wanted to, wanted to share that, the existing conditions and the level of service methodology so that as we go through with the update, you have a better understanding of some of the numbers that we're updating and what it means. So, questions?
I don't know that I have any questions, but maybe a, a couple of quick comments. Page eighty-nine, it talks about the real estate excise tax under funding. That will need to be updated. It has definitely changed since the last iteration. I think it shows it at one point two eight percent. I think it's one point seven eight now. Just a note there. I'm looking forward to seeing the results of, of the next survey. I've, I've spent some time looking through the last one and, and there's some, some good comments in there, a lot of things that I kind of expected, but I saw quite a few that mentioned, don't get rid of the trails. What trails do we have along that line? So I think that it goes right along with data that shows that a lot of people are walking, but there's not a lot of places for them to do that. And I think my favorite comment in here, just on a lighter note, it says, I'm the boss in the house and I have my wife's permission to say so. Somebody put that in their comments.
There's a lot of interesting comments in the other and we didn't want to filter any of it out. We just took all of the comments and put it in there so that people are right. So it'll be interesting to see what we get this time.
A quick comment, Cac, on the public. I, I've heard a lot of folks talk about the swimming pool and it's under North Woodby Park and Recreation Jurisdiction. A lot of folks don't realize that. They think it's a city. And what made that not the city, that, the swimming pool? And I was part of that action group that actually got that accomplished, but was it because of the jurisdiction, because of the bond? What was the reason that the North Woodby Parks controls that entity?
I'm going to look at Steve for.
I don't know that.
Providing information because that was before my time.
If I can just speak on that a little bit, from my understanding, the biggest reason why that did not become cities was because of the tax jurisdiction. By putting the school district, basically that's the, that's the district that the North Woodby Parks is in, it gives a wider tax or tax basis to support that facility. That's from my understanding why it became the district that it, that it's, that it is now.
Wider funding because it takes in all of.
Correct.
As opposed to the city of Oak Harbor.
Correct, because all the school district is basically the same district as North Woodby Parks. Everybody who lives in the district is taxed on that, whereas if it was just a city, then it would just be city taxes, us paying for it that live in the city, vice the ones that live in the district. And it wouldn't go further from my understanding because it's, it got too far, you know, like Coopville and further, further down was just too far for them to come up. So there is a out-of-district fees that they do charge also.
That, that makes sense. I mean, I think it, it not only provides a wider base for the tax support, but also as a service, it serves a larger area and you're not dealing with, trying to keep the rest from that.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions, comments at this time?
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to announce that the next regular meeting will be Tuesday, June twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen, and there being no further business, the meeting's adjourned.